Commissioner Allen, if you'll open us with invocation, I would appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. If everyone will please bow their heads. Your Heavenly Father and Creator, we come before you this evening, humbled in your sight to ask for your blessing upon our judgment and on the actions of this commission. We ask that you continue to bless Columbia County and the state of Georgia and our great nation as you have since its founding. We ask that you be with the first responders and their families who this year have been touched so deeply in so many ways, especially the firefighter last night who was wounded in duty. Mr. Dutchmindy, please be with him as he seeks a speedy recovery. Please be with all of their families as they put up with the uncertainties of the jobs they do to keep us all safe. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the May 6, 2025 budget hearing and the May 6, 2025 commission meeting. Minutes in your packet. You have a... I'll accept a motion to do so if you approve with them unless there's a change.
To accept both minutes as presented?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I believe the agenda is set.
Ready for your approval, Mr. Chairman.
Now, on to special recognitions. Mr. Malir, I believe you have the standing professional award to the Technology Services Division. The IT people are always so reluctant from up front.
So, in today's world, we rely so heavily on communications. And I want to recognize our GIS, IT, and broadband teams. The work of the entire Technology Services Division was exceptional during the aftermath of Helene. One of the most important factors to consider during what they did during that time was due to this team's efforts, the county never lost connectivity or access to the Internet, never lost our phones. They remained operational the entire time. We had access to the online GMA resources. They remained up. Our radios remained operational. Email was up and running. Access to critical county systems was never lost. And we were able to keep our water system going. That requires communication being up as well. And we were even able to help supply other counties with water because we had our act together because of these folks right here. All of this lies with the ability to communicate, and this team rose to the challenge. And we are so excited to present the award in recognition of advancing information technology, Georgia GMS. What does GMS stand for? Georgia Government?
Management Information.
I had it all wrong. So, it says Columbia County Technology Services Division, 2025 Outstanding Professional Award. And I'm told that generally, GMS only gives this to one individual in the entire state. And Mr. Blanchard, when he wrote the application, he was very intentional about saying that he wanted his entire team to get this award. And so, they made an exception, and this goes to the entire team. Do you have any words for your folks?
I want to let everybody here know just how proud I am of this group. We've got a representative sample here from GIS, IT, and broadband utility. But there's a lot of other people that make all of this stuff work. I told them, hey, come to the meeting so the public can see you. Technology folks kind of like to be behind the scenes. They prefer not to be seen because that means everything's working. You know, the service doesn't get calls when everything is working. But they did such an outstanding job during the hurricane, from the moment it hit us or before it actually hit us, until weeks afterward, these folks have done outstanding work. And I'm very proud of them. They're part of the bigger whole that is the county. Consider all the work that was done by all the county departments. You know, it really wasn't just us alone. There's a lot of other people that contribute to that. So, I'm very proud to be part of this team. Our folks, you know, they carried a lot of responsibility on their shoulders during that week. Proud of them.
Y'all come in and look like you.
Next agenda item, there's a declaration for National Safe Boating Week, a proclamation. Mr. Allen?
Good evening. If Mr. Larry Wiggins and his team would approach, please, Coast Guard Auxiliary.
What?
When you look like me, anything can only improve.
I don't think it's gonna fit.
Oh, that's not gonna fit.
There we go. Well, this is a...
This is a child's small, right? All right. Should have brought the bigger one.
Uh-huh.
Sir? Thank y'all for being here.
Don't break into a sweat.
Here we go. Already going. All right. I'm gonna read this proclamation now. Whereas, for over 100 million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity. From coast to coast and everywhere in between, people are taking to the water and enjoying time together boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing. During National Safe Boating Week, the U.S. Coast Guard and the National Safe Boating Council, along with federal, state, and local safe boating partners, encourage all boaters to explore and enjoy America's beautiful waters responsibly. Whereas, safe boating begins with preparation. The Coast Guard estimates that human error accounts for most boating accidents and that life jackets could prevent nearly 75% of boating fatalities. Through basic boating safety procedures, carrying lifesaving emergency distress and communications equipment, wearing life jackets, attending safe boating courses, participating in free boat safety checks, and staying sober while navigating, we can help ensure boaters on America's coastal, inland, and offshore waters stay safe throughout the season. And whereas, National Safe Boating Week is observed to bring attention to important lifesaving tips for recreational boaters so that they can have a safer, more fun experience out on the water throughout the year. Whereas, on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the U.S., 75% of these fatalities caused by drowning. And whereas, the vast majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat, equipment, or environmental factors. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Commissioners of Columbia County, do hereby support the goals of the Safe Boating Campaign and proclaim May 17 through 23, 2025, as National Safe Boating Week and the start of the year-round effort to promote the wearing of life jackets and safe boating. Sign this 20th day of May, 2025. The official proclamation. Y'all very much. I think we do.
I don't think he wants evidence.
This is a... This is the teaching moment. If the jacket doesn't fit, wrong jacket.
All right.
Also, it'll be a lot of places.
It'll be in the funny pages.
Thank you, sir.
And for those of you that don't know, a large motivation for us getting our own hospital in Columbia County is the dangers of the lake. Having a trauma center so close to the lake was a big initiative that we wanted to take care of. That's what motivated us to take action.
You might as well stay down there. I think you have another one.
Yes, but I left it up there.
Safety month.
Have a costume change for...
Yeah, I don't know if we have any more props. The builder... Building standards, inspectors and staff would come up, please, this presentation. Do we have anyone here? There we go. What do you guys want me to wear?
Heart hat.
Heart hat in the car.
Wear that vest.
Come on, let's get towards the middle.
There you go.
Congratulations. All right. Proclamation for the Building Safety Month. Whereas Columbia County is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role of our homes, buildings and infrastructure play both in everyday life and when disaster strikes. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas these guardians are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes and standards protecting us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas these modern building codes and standards include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our code officials. Now, therefore, the Columbia County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of May, 2025, as Building Safety Month and acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by our building safety and fire prevention departments, protecting lives and property. Sign this 20th day of May, 2025. Congratulations to you all. Thank you. Hold this. Someone needs to hold this. Thank y'all. Thank y'all very much.
Right, you're on to the consent agenda, commissioners. You have the consent agenda in front of you. Each one of these items has been through the necessary committees and received the necessary votes to be placed on the consent agenda. But if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion to approve them all.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept all the consent agenda items as presented.
Questions? Questions? Motion second and fourth, all in favor, raise your right hand. Carries on to the debate and unfinished business. Mr. Allen, you are up.
Yes, sir. Have quite an evening. Item I-1A1. I make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2502, Chapter 74, subdivisions, Article H... I'm sorry, Article 2, Procedure for Platte Approval, Section 74-36 Generally.
Second.
This is the second reading of this ordinance revision. This has to do with conceptual plans. The basic changes are, any property that has a rezoning will still require conceptual plan with review by the Planning Commission. However, after that conceptual plan is approved by the Planning Commission, any change that does not alter access to the adjacent development, increase the density or number of units, or significantly alter the interior layout of streets or lots, may not have to go to the Planning Commission. It can be approved by the Planning Director. Second phase would be, if a development proposed with existing zonings in place, the Planning Service Director of the Disney will be the reviewing authority. Basically, make sure they are following the code. They're not changing zoning. So, if they're following code, Scott can approve the concept plan. And lastly, clarify that developments that do not require dedication of any public utilities or infrastructure may have the concept plan requirement waived. So, they're not extending water lines, sewer lines. So they're not extending water lines, sewer lines, roads, just subdividing some lots and putting houses on it, no roads, and then it does not require a conceptual plan. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Second reading. Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Item I-1A2. I would like to make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 25-03, Chapter 90, Zoning, Article 4, Supplemental Requirements, Section 90-139, Buffers and Screening.
Second.
The second reading amends some buffer requirements. The first one, it will allow a driveway to be permitted to cross a buffer. This will allow adjacent properties to have an interconnecting driveway between them. If there are different zonings, there is a buffer required between them. This will allow that driveway to go across that buffer. It'll allow, excuse me, it will allow a request to put a planted berm in a buffer. So we're starting to see some requests for that. Instead of having a planted buffer, they're wanting to build a 10-foot-tall, 15-foot-tall berm, and then plant it with vegetation to offer more screening. That will now be allowed. Currently, we require a 50-foot natural buffer around common residential developments adjacent to public or private roads or right-of-ways. That will be reduced down to 25 feet. However, the trade-off on that is currently that 50-foot buffer is included in private lots. We have found that over time, the owner of the private lot tends to thin that buffer out. Therefore, our buffer ends up going away. This new 25-foot buffer will be required to be platted on its own lot and owned by the HOA, so it's there now will be protected. The next one will be a waive or reduce buffers on properties that are but county-owned or Board of Education-owned or other entities that do not have to abide by Chapter 90. Typically, if the county has some green space that we know whenever we develop, and you have a property next door being developed, they're required to buffer a natural buffer. So this waives that buffer beside a buffer, if you will. And the last one was, buffers may be reduced or waived during site plan review in conjunction with the stormwater department if the area is abutting a floodplain or wetlands that are already protected. So a wetlands or a stream has a required protection by the federal government or the state government, therefore, we do not have to put another protection on top of it. So if you're abutting a natural area, or a wetlands or a floodplain, you can have your buffer waived. Be happy to answer any questions about those. That's a lot.
Questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Item I-1A3. I would like to make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance number 25-04, Chapter 90, Zoning, Article 4, Supplemental Requirements, Section 90-140, Landscaping.
Second.
Second reading for this one clarifies some tree requirements. So currently, there's a list of approved trees. This will allow the Planning Director to approve a tree that is not currently specified in our list of trees. We are also adjusting the spacing of the trees. Currently, they're 40 feet on center for shade trees and 20 feet on center for ornamental trees. We're moving that to 45 and 25 respectively. We're also putting in a spacing, anything within 120 feet of the intersection will be reviewed with the Traffic Engineering Department to make sure we're not causing blind spots at intersections. And then we are putting in a requirement that street trees that are not in areas associated with a building must be installed upon, in a timeline agreed upon by the developer and the Planning Service Director. The situation, the trees are usually planted by the home builder, not developer. But there's areas that the developer builds that is never gonna have a building, such as a pond or a green space. So we're gonna require the developer to install the trees at an agreed-upon timeline, so that they don't get left out, and five years from now, we have trees missing. Kind of tie that bow to our trees.
Questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
And now item I-1A4. I make a motion to approve the second reading of Resolution Number 25-03, Whispering Pines, Section 4B, and 2504, Whispering Pines, Section 5B, and 2508, Jackson Heights, Phase 2, to establish streetlight districts.
Second.
Our streetlight districts requested by the developer. We have had a public hearing, and this is the second reading.
Questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Commissioner Couch, on to you.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the second reading of Resolution Number 25-14, Stormwater Compliance Fee Schedule Revisions.
Second.
So currently, stormwater is setting up to teach classes that are required to be, sorry, to teach classes for certifications required by the state for land disturbing activities. Apologize, my computer just jumped a whole new screen here. Currently, we do not have a fee set aside for Georgia Soil Water Conservation Level 1A, 1B, and 1A, 1B recertifications. These are required to be held by contractors that are gonna be doing land disturbance work in the state of Georgia. So we're setting up a fee to charge that. This fee does cover the materials, as well as some of the staff time required to have this. You can get this certification from the private sector as well. This also puts on a fee for people that start work without a permit. If you do start work without a proper permit, you will have to pay the double fee to cover the additional work required by staff. It also creates a rain barrel workshop fee. We currently hold rain barrel workshops. It will be $55, and that will actually cover the cost of the rain barrel. So we're only covering our cost of supplies for that.
We're giving them a rain barrel.
They will leave here with a rain barrel to collect rainwater and water their plants with.
Any other questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Mr. Malir.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to appoint Gary Richardson to the Public Facilities Authority to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Don Skinner, whose term expires 12/31/27.
Second.
It's just an appointment to our Public Facilities Authority due to her resignation. This is Commissioner Malir's appointment.
Questions? Ever raise your right hand? Motion carries. Moving on to the debate, we have someone who wants to speak for the first item. Gerald Chistler. Will, sir, please state your name and address for the records, and you have five minutes.
Of course. Gerald Chechester of Fox Rothschild LLP. Our address is 999 Peachtree Street Northeast, Suite 1500. That's Atlanta, Georgia. Good evening, Chairman and the Board. Thank you so much for the opportunity to briefly speak before you. This rezoning is pretty straightforward. We've enjoyed working with the staff, who I believe has given unanimous recommendation of approval. This rezoning just permits the development of the property to be a little bit more practical going forward, but don't have much comment other than that, other than this rezoning item is separate and distinct from our variance request, which we did withdraw. And I would open and request that the Board approve that withdrawal of that request, but I understand this is for the zoning. But happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
Questions?
No concerns about the zoning itself, just the following issue?
Understood.
Mr. Allen?
That being the case, sir, I would like to make a motion to approve the request for a rezoning from split zone C2 and C1 to C2, property located at tax map 072A, parcel 183, for proposed commercial development.
Any questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right, what?
I'll have a second.
Somebody second it, sorry. I'll second it. Sorry. Now there's a motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. You have one more, sir?
So the, I guess the following item, I'm happy to sit down and come back up, however you'd like.
I think we're good.
Okay, okay. But just to remind the Board.
Right.
I'd like to withdraw that request. variance request. Thank you. That being the case, sir, I would like to make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice the request for variance of parcels 072A, 183.
Second.
Any questions? Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Right, sir. Item I-2B3. I would like to make a motion to approve the request for rezoning from RA and a split-zoned RA and M1 to S1, for property located at tax map 018, parcel 006, and tax map 019, parcel 003, for the proposed White Oak Technology Park.
Second.
Had one person who wanted to speak. Manny Dallas.
I'd like to go ahead and state, my name is Manny Dallas. I live at 2393 Mars Callaway Road. Now, I looked at the proposal that y'all had posted. It does not address, how can, I'm wanting to know how can you vote on something where it does not address noise levels? One. Two, water. It mentioned all the water usage, talked about retention basins, but there's a lot of water this is using. The second is light pollution. This facility is gonna generate, my front field is gonna look like a Walmart parking lot. The next is, I don't understand with y'all getting, telling me what the dB readings are gonna be off the property line, because right now, our noise ordinance for Columbia County is between 50 and 70 dB between the hours of 10 and 7:00 in the morning. How are they gonna generate and have stand-by generator systems for this? Which our President of our United States even stated that they will have generator systems, backups, for these database centers. None on the proposal that y'all sent out addresses this. How can y'all vote on something that you have no answers for?
Mr. Scott, will you go over the items that, or the conditions that are on this request that you mentioned that we do address? And then I would like to invite Chaney with the Development Authority to come answer his other questions.
That's all I have to say. And I'd like to have, hear some type of response.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Just, as I said, I don't believe there's any actual conditions attached to this rezoning. Correct me, so there's no actual additional...
I'm sorry, in the narrative.
The narrative?
Yes.
All right, so we have actually visited some sites that are similar to this. Obviously, we don't have an end user. At this, I say "we," Development Authority, I'm speaking on behalf of the Development Authority. Development Authority doesn't have an end user that I'm aware of. So we have visited sites very similar. We have stood outside at the front door of these things, and you hear nothing from them, albeit the generators are not running. We asked those questions as well about the generators. They are not using the typical generators that you see around our buildings, where you have a very large diesel motor running one generator. They are using very small motors, multiple small motors chained together to turn the big generator. So bringing that level down. We have looked at the water use. We've had our water utility looking at it. It is a concern if they were to use a water-cooled system. However, I do not believe that is the most efficient way of doing it. Again, they do not have an end user. Will dictate this final use, but there are much more efficient systems to use other than water that do not require four to six million gallons of water being pushed through this site, and then four million gallons being dumped on the ground. As far as the light goes, typically, we make them give us a light plan that shows that there's a zero-foot candle at the property line, so that light does not exceed. I know the argument's gonna be, yeah, but you light the sky up. So we're also requiring folks to use downward-facing light, so we do not have that light pollution going up. And that's not just this site, that's most of our commercial sites that we do now. I'm trying to make sure I got all your questions. If you're gonna talk, let's come up here, so we can... We gotta have you for the, we gotta have your recording. We need you on recording.
All right. What I'm saying is, when you're talking about the noise levels and that sort, y'all talk about from standing outside of these facilities. You talk about the lighting issue. The lighting at Amazon, I can see it lit up all out there. Are you implementing this there? Because it's not working if you are.
Not sure what we did on that one, Scott. Do you remember if that was?
Well, that's another one of my concerns. The next is the road traffic. Mars Callaway Road is not designed for heavy traffic. Now, I know that you're aware of that.
Absolutely.
It's been paved twice in over 40 years. Okay? Next thing is, they said that it's emergency entrance. Come on, guys. What is to make sure that they make these emergency entrances? As soon as they develop it, they say, well, we decided we want it to be a plant entrance. What do I have? Nothing. But see, I have to rely on you, and you, and you, all of my county commissioners. Y'all are to protect me and my lifestyle at here, in this county, which is one of the greatest counties in the state. But I don't need my life be turned upside down for, I don't know what. I mean, what are we trying to do here? Is turn this into a industrial park of what magnitude? That's, I'm trying to get these answers, but y'all's proposal does not have them. And that's my question, is how are you going to vote when you don't even have the answers? That's why I want this be shelved. Is there any other ones you want?
Let's go to the, with the S1 zoning, is they have provided a site plan. That site plan does call out those entrances to be emergency-only. So any kind of change to that would require us to come back to a public hearing again to change it to a full access. And if it comes to traffic, even though this is 29, but probably 24 buildings, if it gets a full build out over 15 years, data center has very little public access to it. There's no reason to go. There's nothing to go with it. The workforce would be, minimum, I would say probably 100 people, Chaney. I don't wanna speak for Chaney, this is...
Absolutely.
Thank you. It's nice to see y'all. Good evening. Chaney Eldridge, Executive Director of the Development Authority. I just wanna restate, when I started this job about a year ago, I met with a lot of y'all, county leadership, to identify what you were looking for out of economic development for this county. And I was charged with two things. Identifying projects that brought high-quality employment opportunities and investment-heavy projects. Spent a lot of months trying to identify what the perfect thing would be for Columbia County, not to just do what every other county was doing, but what we wanted to do here. And after that due diligence, we identified that a data center fit those categories perfectly. Employment is low, wage is high, and so is investment. Went and visited and stood outside, and I can tell you that the geek in the head and the inner city is louder than this building. And you talk about generators, I know that is certainly a concern. They're emergency, so they do test them, but when they did a study and looked at for a year how long those testings were going on, it was less than three minutes in our year. Probably less than you may run your own home generator, or run something else that's a similar decibel level. Feel like for this piece of property, this is the highest and best use for the tax revenue that could be generated. Certainly not something that we came to lightly. And there are major pieces associated with this that are yet to be decided because of the... And so you're correct that we don't have answers to everything. That end user will dictate what happens, but anything that does come from that end user will have to come before the body again. I think this group wants to do what's right for the county, and certainly, the Development Authority does as well. And it's not going to be industrial. That's what's laid out in the zoning proposal, that it's data center only. So you will not see another Amazon. I think that's good. A residential development would generate much more traffic than you're going to see from even 29 buildings of these. Thank you. I've got an engineering team here to answer.
Question, do you live in a rural area? Because my front, I can sit on my front porch. I can hear you talking on Mars Callaway Road, and I have a seven-acre field in front of me. You're giving, on this proposal, 500 feet. 500 feet, nothing when you have other structures. And I can hear people talking on Mars Callaway Road. I have six acres, which is roughly in front of me, which makes it roughly over 1,000 feet. And I can hear them talking. And I can hear them talking. And you're telling me that it's not going to be exceeding this forty B reading of us speaking? Because I can hear it, like I said, there. You're telling me you don't hear any of it?
I can tell you that the thing overhead is louder than.
I don't think you're gonna get all, you're not gonna get all the answers to the question.
They make a lot of noise when they fly.
Mr. Dallas, can you point on the screen in front of you? Can you tell us where your home is in relation to all of this? If you touch it, it'll make a dot so we can.
Where, what is that?
Where's your home?
This, this is Mars Callaway over here, so.
It's right there. This is my property.
Oh.
It runs down the side of all this. My cousins that are sitting right here, this is their property on this other side of your property line. It runs all the way down all these. I'm just concerned because y'all give me a hard time about runoff on my farm coming off of my buildings. Look at these buildings here. What are we gonna, where's this runoff you talk about that y'all hit me up on about barns and all this? This is, these buildings are tremendous. These are no small buildings. What is the dimension of each building?
Thank you.
My, my name is Drew Frederick. I'm with Tremel Crow Company. Uh, just, just a couple of things. You know, one before, just in terms of, you know, said correctly as far as the water. I mean, I have talked with the water. Solution isn't, that we've talked, is a water solution that'll be at the expense. Uh, as far as emergency access goes, there is really no point, there is no way that the traffic was, is gonna go. Perfectly fine with that being an absolute. Data centers are extreme. Dirty fans that runs the entire. The only thing that we would have for access would be emergency access. Locks, box locks. Now, enter these facilities, you have to go through dirty gates. Definitely, there will not be traffic accessing from. Certainly, sound is always a concern. For the most part, the data centers are not, you know, can be noisy when testing generates. Also, when you look at, one, sound studies get done. Sound curtains. All sound walls that can be used. So, there is gonna be a case where sound studies will be done. Did you hear them? Could hear them. But it's also gonna be at the level tested during the day. Not gonna be a case where you can hide or run at night. Really, the, the really, not as concerned with exceeding the decibel levels for testing individually. What could happen is in a worst-case scenario, if the power does go out and all of them go on, it'll be a little bit louder. Also gonna hear a lot of sirens and whatnot. Bad has happened. Power's gone out. So, certainly understand the concerns. Noise, noise is there during testing of generators, uh, but really it's water. We are pushing any kind of tenant that we would get. Certainly, when it comes to kind of stormwater management. That, so that part I'm not as worried about. Certainly don't know, understand issues with property surrounding. Certainly from our standpoint, it's where we would get. These are, I mean, these are clean buildings. Buildings that are, essentially, it's essentially a house-looking type. Essentially get fifty people. Amount of definitely see the most. That is, that is absolutely true. Proximity to the Highway twenty, main access is gonna be, traffic is gonna be along that road. Hard performing a traffic study. Clearly, from a traffic standpoint. In influx during construction. Actually, one of them were, one of the, one of the better type of buildings.
Any other questions?
I just want to reiterate that we did spend a lot of time and care in looking over this project, and I truly want it to be the lowest impact on you and your property possible. And a lot of that information was submitted in the narrative that was submitted with the rezoning. If you'd like to go back and look over that.
Thank you. I will say before we bought the property, the previous landowner was intent on putting subdivision. I don't know how many houses you can get. Five, six, seven, eight. I believe, is there a motion second on the floor? We have a motion second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Oh.
I seconded.
I thought we did. Motion carries.
I to be for. Um, I make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw without prejudice, the request for a rezoning of a portion of parcel zero-two-four-zero-five-seven.
Second.
Don Brian? Not coming. Julie Harrison? Motion second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Illegal matters, a request for review by committee, for the public comments, Ms. Priscilla Bence.
Thank you, Commissioners and Raiders.
Could state your name and address for the record, and please take five minutes.
Oh, Priscilla Bence, forty-two fifteen Dunwoodie Road, Martinez. And I'm coming here to talk about the library situation, just haven't been here for about a year and a half. I want to thank you. This is not a complaint session at all. I want to thank you for the guidelines for the library board, at least since January twenty-twenty-four, for the new Columbia County Board for putting a spotlight on the problem. And it's SB seventy-four at the state level, if they follow through with the example you've set. Several books have been moved over to the adult section, so there's progress. The, the reason I came here tonight is because, um, a lot of the young adult, uh, books have pornography or LGBTQ indoctrination, and the whole young adult teen room, which is downstairs, it's about twenty-by-twenty-foot room. Hundred percent of them are YA books. Um, it's called the teen room for a reason. That's where the teenagers go. So, I'm requesting that you consider, um, having all the adult literature materials downstairs and all the children and teen literature upstairs. That would just solve a world of problems. The problem we have right now is there's so much YA literature coming in that the challenge process is going like this in a positive direction, but you've got YA literature going like this. We had a hundred-and-twenty-three books that identified in the YA room a year ago, and there's two-hundred-and-thirty-nine right now. But the growth is too fast for the public or the librarians or anybody, or the board, or anybody to have a solution unless we move the adult material downstairs and the teen and children material upstairs. That would just, that would solve eighty percent of the problem. I recently read several, um, classics, trying to catch up from what I never did, and the classics are actually catalogued in the adult section. Uh, the classics are all catalogued and shelved in the adult section, and we could really use them up in the middle ground. There's a middle ground new section upstairs, has about three-hundred books. That's for age ten to fourteen. And then you really don't have any books from fifteen to seventeen. Uh, one way you could plus them up is to get some classics or some abridged classics or some adapted classics for the age. So, um, we can improve the, the book collection upstairs. We can move the large-print adult books downstairs. It's a no-brainer. It's common sense. And move all of the young adult books out of the teen room into the adult section, which is something that I've kind of been saying. It just makes sense because young adult is actually adult, and the teenagers, twelve and thirteen, fourteen-year-olds is who, is who I see there when I go there. They're in the young adult teen room. We can make that room a lot of different things. Could be reference DVDs. You know, you could use that room for the large-print adult books. But I'm just asking for upstairs to be children teen, downstairs to be adult. That would solve a lot of problems. Y'all have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Really appreciate.
Karen Parham?
Uh, good evening. My name is Karen Parham, and I live at three-four-two-one Hilltop Trail. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. At the last meeting, Commissioner Allen and I had a disagreement about the legality of the shelving guidelines. I want to be clear, I'm not a lawyer, um, but every attorney I've spoken with has expressed concern about the constitutionality of these guidelines. It occurred to me afterward that Commissioner Allen wasn't yet in office when legal opinions were sent to the regional board and the commissioners. So, tonight, I've brought packets of those letters in case you haven't seen them or would like a refresher. That said, I don't want to debate the legal merits of those letters. I'm not qualified to. Which raises an important question. Why are we, non-lawyers, debating legal issues in the first place? Before the regional board's vote in December, I reached out to Mr. Johnson and Mr. Driver to request Mr. Driver's presence at the November County Library Board Meeting to provide legal insight. I never received a response. Unfortunately, that's kind of been a trend for my communications with this county. However, I did find Mr. Driver's public statement from the August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, uh, Commissioners' meeting in response to a request to move all LGBTQ books to the adult section. At that time, the rhetoric centered on LGBTQ propaganda rather than obscenity. He said, "So, what they're requesting would be considered content-based restriction. It's restriction based on the content of the book. Here, the homosexual nature of the books. This has been addressed by courts. There has been no case I found in favor of being able to do this. In fact, there's a court case almost exactly on point that says you can't. The reason being, with First Amendment cases, if you restrict based on content itself, you're under strict scrutiny and pretty much just lose every time if you're a government entity." So, why then, just a year later, did this body move forward with a content-based shelving policy without even seeking an updated legal opinion from Mr. Driver? Who is a reputable attorney from a respected firm who is paid with taxpayer dollars to advise this board? At best, this policy is legally risky. It's certainly not fiscally conservative to pursue something courts have consistently struck down, especially when you know it exposes the library system to legal challenges that will have to be paid for with taxpayer money. We've now dragged the entire region into this, and they didn't want the liability. The region sought its own legal counsel and held extended executive sessions. I know, because I waited outside in the hallway during those meetings. And according to Mr. Johnson's media comments, Columbia County wants to withdraw from the region because the region might change the guidelines. Well, that possibility was never mentioned public at any of the regional board meetings. So, it must have been discussed behind closed doors during executive sessions while receiving legal advice. I also want to respond to a comment made at the last meeting that perhaps I'm overusing the word censorship. But censorship is the suppression of ideas. When a government entity moves books written for children or teens out of the section specifically designed for them and into a higher-age category or the adult section, it's making a decision about which ideas are easily accessible and which are not. That is censorship. And let's not forget, no child under twelve is allowed in the public library without an adult present. With freedom comes responsibility, and every parent should be responsible for monitoring their own child's book selections. Every family has the right to decide what is appropriate for their child. That decision should not be made unilaterally by government or library officials based on political or religious worldviews. And if we want to talk about the overuse of certain terms, let's start with obscenity. That word has a very narrow legal definition. Porn, which gets thrown around constantly, has no legal definition at all. Some people talk like there's a Hustler magazine sitting in the picture book section, and that's simply not true. We've seen misleading claims about where certain books are shelved in order to push this narrative. And in many cases, the simple presence of an LGBTQ character is equated with obscenity or so-called grooming by book challengers. This kind of rhetoric is harmful, not just to our LGBTQ families and neighbors, but at this point, it's psychologically abusive to library staff. In closing, I urge you to reconsider the path you've put our county on. It's legally risky, fiscally irresponsible, insulting to parents, and incredibly divisive. Thank you for your time.
Robert Heidman?
Robert Heidman, one oh four Hot Springs Court.
Five minutes.
Thank you, sir. First, I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for making Columbia County a very desirable and sought-after county that people want to live. It seems that people who move out of an area do so because they have to live with the consequences of their vote. The area has become unsafe, not economically feasible, increasing taxes, et cetera. They move to a better area and want to institute the same practices into their new community that were present in the community that they had just left. This board, and I know the library board because I've attended their meetings, has been inundated with pressure in regards to re-shelving of books to a more age-appropriate area. Many parents do not want their children exposed to subject material dealing with LGBTQ issues, gay issues, hetero or homosexual graphics and content. Those who are pushing to maintain this material within the reach of children in the library go into great detail on the content, even making the comments, "You need to read the whole book." No, I don't. Although many of us not familiar with the exact makeup of the material, to paraphrase U.S. Supreme Court Justice Potter Stewart in nineteen-sixty-four in the Jacob, Jacob Bellis versus Ohio, "I may not be able to define, define pornography, but I know it when I see it." Those that have brought this issue front and center will continue to push until they get their way. I've heard them say that it is a First Amendment right. The material does not meet the threshold of pornography by certain Georgia statutes or laws, and what the library should, and the library should represent all citizens of the county. On the surface, this may sound correct, but it is common sense and morally wrong to have children exposed to such graphic and descriptive sexual material. Societies put guardrails in place to protect. Children cannot see certain movies, buy alcohol or cigarettes, enter into contracts. They must authenticate that they are eighteen on a porn site because society has determined that certain materials must be age-appropriate. The guideline at the library where books should be placed is a guardrail that you had put in place. How and where did this issue arise, and why is it pushed so hard? Those who oppose the guidelines say that shelving of these books in the children's area meet the guidelines of the American Library Association. meet the guidelines of the American Library Association. Upon taking over as the ALA president in 2023, Emily Drabinski tweeted that she was a self-proclaimed Marxist lesbian. Why would someone who had assumed a leadership role make this remark? And by proxy, it could be interpreted to represent that the organization as a whole is Marxist. Upon taking office, she said she wants to make sure that the LGBTQ community sees themselves reflected in the books on their library shelves. Emily Drabinski's tweet calling herself a Marxist lesbian also has drawn criticism and set the tone for the ideology of the ALA. Those who want these books to be in reach within children, they quote, "support," and they want to use the ALA as a guideline or a standard guideline for our libraries. Marxist advocate for the revolutionary overthrow of capitalist systems. There has never, in the history of mankind, been a Marxist society that has flourished and prospered. Just the fact that she made these remarks should be a warning sign that she advocates all that Marxism represents. On the political spectrum, the only political ideology to the left of Marxism is communism. After her comments, the state libraries in Montana, Missouri, and Texas announced that they are leaving the ALA. Lawmakers in nine other states, Arizona, Georgia, which passed State Bill 390 in February of 2024 banning private or public funds for the ALA, Illinois, Louisiana, Mississippi, Pennsylvania, South Carolina, South Dakota, and Wyoming are demanding similar action. Part of the reason is the ALA's defense of disputed books, many of which have LGBTQ themes geared towards children. I want to thank you very much on behalf of all the parents who don't want this material within their reach or within the reach of their children in the library. And I encourage you to protect the children of Columbia County and maintain the guardrail that you've put in place. Also, I want to thank you again for making Columbia County a community that continues to thrive and remain a desirable location where people want to live, work, and raise their children. God bless you. God bless Columbia County. God bless America. Thank you.
Benjamin Lyda.
My name is Benjamin Lyda. I live at 1383 Clary Cut Road. Here to talk on the annexation and the rezoning of the parcel across the street from me, 735 acres into the city of Harlem, so that they can put 810 houses in that development. Everybody on Clary Cut has acreage lots. No subdivision on Clary Cut. My business has taken me from Boston to Miami. I chose to be here in Columbia County 20 years ago because of what that sign says behind you. A community of pride, county of vision. You have the greatest government I have seen, and I've dealt with governments all down the East Coast. That's why I chose Columbia County. I did not choose Harlem. Okay, Harlem is none of that. And I appreciate the resolution that you guys adopted in opposing this development. I will state that I've been to the city council meeting, the zoning. They refused to give any concepts. I got into an argument with Mr. Thigpen, the city council, and said there was no concept. I did an open records request, over a thousand pages of documents. They will give no one any documents. They said there's no concept. Here's the concept. They've had it for nine months. They told me two weeks ago and four weeks ago, there's no concept. Here's the concept. Here's the concept in writing from the engineer, and they're just denying this to everyone. I pulled the open records request. I said, "I want every email for this property for the last 10 years." Go up there to get it from the city clerk. He says, "This is it. There's nothing prior to 2024. No emails relating to this property previous to 2024." I said, "Ma'am, I know there are. Is this it?" She said, "That's it. That's it. I have it in an email." Where I told her, I said, "I'm going to do you a favor. I'll give you until noon tomorrow to get me the rest of the emails, or I'm going to sue you," which is what I'm supposed to do in Columbia County. I get an email at 11:50 the next day. I'll share it with all you. We miraculously found nine more pages of documents. If you give us that email you have, then we can see who it's from, and we can find that one, too. They're hiding things from everybody. Here's all the documents, the plans that they say, "Hey, we'll bring it in..." This is from the city manager of the city of Harlem. He says, "We'll bring it in as an A1, and then we'll come back when everything dies down and give it a pud." So the resolution. Appreciate that. Anything that you guys can do for us. Now, there's two things in all these emails that the developer says. What will kill this project? You've got to get at least one house per acre. Right now, they're putting them on half-acre lots with 15-foot in the backyard. I have 21 acres across the street. I've put $1 million on my property. I happily write the check $9,000 to Columbia County for my property tax. Never asked for it to be reduced, never done any of that because it's effective in Columbia. That whole street, the whole community is extremely happy with Columbia County. This does not fit. If he can't get one house per acre, he's not going to do the deal. He also says the other thing. "If I can't get the sewer line in the next five to seven years, I'm not going to do the deal, and I'd like to stay in Columbia County." Says it repeatedly in the emails. Well, I learned in the emails, Harlem doesn't own their sewer line, doesn't own their sewer plant anymore. Columbia County does. What I'm asking, Columbia County, take Columbia County tax dollars, their employees, and worry about the county. No reason for us to worry about them annexing into the city of Harlem so they can jam this neighborhood into us, other than Columbia County spending their effort and their tax dollars to run the sewer lines into this neighborhood. No reason for that whatsoever. Now, I've spoke to the sewer department. There's limited capacity in Columbia County. Use that capacity for the county employee, the county, you've got plenty of development coming. Take that capacity and use it for the development that's coming. He's not submitted anything to the county, saying how much sewage he needs and all this other stuff. Give it to the people that have already applied. We just, I'm just going to be honest. We just need to run this thing out five to seven years, say, "We don't have the capacity for it. Sorry." Then he can stay in Columbia County, which he says he will, and y'all can make a deal with him. But it doesn't fit the area. And Harlem lies and lies and lies to everybody. They refuse to give me the concept. I was called an idiot at the city council meeting by the city councilman, Mr. Thigpen, because I insisted there was a concept, and he said I was an idiot because there was no concept. He's had it for nine months. No one on the city council corrected him and said, "No, we have it. City manager's sitting right there. No, we have it." They're lying to everybody. It's all in the emails. I have a thousand pages I'm going to leave with you guys. I ask a couple things. Read a couple emails. 10 minutes. That's it. They're repetitive emails. They print off 10 pages because they want everything to get lost in there every time somebody sends one little email. In three minutes, Clary Cut's three miles long. Drive down Clary Cut. Ask each one of you. Three minutes. Drive down Clary Cut, look for a neighborhood. No neighborhood. Drive down it. The other thing I would ask is, use the county resources elsewhere. Who's going to pay for the sewer line? Who's going to pay for the lift stations? Who's going to pay for all this for the city of Harlem to cram this in there and lie to every, blatantly lie to everybody about this? The zoning sign that's up out there right now is not for the zoning that they're asking for. Here's the zoning documents. I told them that. They don't care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chad Medlin.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Chad Medlin, and I live in District 4 of Columbia County. Some of y'all know me, others we just met. However, I'm here to make a public and formal announcement that I will be seeking candidacy in District 426. In the coming days and months, I want to work with each of you. Lyda's comments tonight. Callaway, I want to get out into the community and hear more about that. So if you'll just bear with me, I'm excited about getting this campaign excited forward to it and see if we can take this county the best that it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. We have two executive session items. Commissioner Couch, I believe they're yours.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve $19,700 to David and Susan Tolson, parcel 060065. $28,000 to Catherine McDaniel, parcel 073002A. $23,500 to Alan Harrison, parcel 072A019. $86,500 to Nathan Holly Calaveri, parcel 072234. $16,600 to Christian Alamo, parcel 072243. And $115,000 to U.S. Duffy and Gail Duffy, parcel 067007A, to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Hereford Farm Road widening project.
Second.
These are all standard acquisitions. This gets us, with the next one, if you approve it, to 69% complete.
Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve $55,500 to Ronald and Monica Ostrander, parcel 072A018, to obtain right-of-way and/or easements for the Hereford Farm Road widening project.
Second.
Eight zero eighty to go.
Questions? Motion is second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. One more motion needs to be made.
I make a motion to approve.
It's approved. Your adjourn.